This meeting of March 6, 2018 was included in a notice sent to newspapers of record and posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building and has remained continuously posted as the required notices under the statute. In addition, a copy of this notice has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the municipal clerk.
Stand for the indications and apply suit. Folks, I'd like to have a moment of silence this evening for Danielle's grandmother, who is the oldest living Phillipsburg resident. She passed away this morning, second oldest. She passed away this morning at 102 years old. So, God willing.
Thank you. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, fed our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, right, and speech. God bless the town of Phillipsburg, the state of New Jersey, and the United States of America. Amen.
Let's witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
House of Representatives.
Here.
Council Vice President, Peter Almera.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman Lutz.
Here.
Councilman McBenn.
Here.
Moving along with the approval of the minutes. No. Just a point of order for the minutes because they're from last year. Do you want to move to the council to vote? Councilman Lutz, Councilman Davis.
Just let it ride.
You know, you both can vote on it. It's called the doctrine of necessity because we have no ability to form a quorum and it did need to be approved. So, to the extent that the councilmen are in agreement in the contents, we can motion to approve. So, moving.
Second.
There's your roll call vote between the two councilmen.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Okay. Vicki, can you run them through the bills list?
State federal grants, $195.37. Capital fund, $16,812.18. Sewer utility fund, $8,267.84. Sewer capital fund, $31,107.71. Planning Board trust, $651.50. Opus Investments, $2,025. Section 8, $18. Our regular bill list for March 6 is $2,197,088.92. No Section 8 rent payments. The prepaid bill list, the sewer utility, $2,391.54. The agency fund, $3,233.48 for a prepaid bill list of $5,625.2. Brand total of all funds, $2,202,713.94.
Any questions on the bill list?
I have questions.
Can I move to approve the bill list?
I have questions.
Would you second?
Second.
We'll be discussing. Councilman?
72174.
That's the start on our leaders in the amount of $1,208.
It is. So, the question is, have we looked into changing that? Because I did see the invoice and it doesn't even say what it was quartered. They didn't even say not how many, how much each.
So, I have. Council President. Yes, sir. I have that highlighted as well, Council Vice President. And I know Chief Steppner is on training this week. I had correspondence with him going back and forth. This is one of the things I have on his plate for discussion.
Okay.
He, I know he has gone to other area cleaners and he's in the process of getting the recommended estimates for, I guess, for what our town or needs are and stuff. This is something, I don't know exactly, I have familiarity with what he's looking at, but he is taking action on this and it is in motion right now. But again, I have it highlighted and just as anxious as you are to get this problem right, fly it straight down.
Just following up. Thank you. 72194, this indicates, I was told last year that the only expenses the town of Phillipsburg covers for recreation are for safety equipment.
And this is for?
72194 for BSN squirts. Do we know that to be true or?
Unfortunately, the mayor here this evening. The mayor is here?
He was.
Okay. Unfortunately, you seem out here.
Did he do those policy on that? I don't know what was ordered under that without looking at the bill.
I can tell you that the bills that we have previously reimbursed for have been for things beyond safety equipment.
Okay.
So, in terms of past practice, we have paid for some things. I know, for example, we paid for baseballs last year for some of the teams.
We did. Thank you. Yes, we have. 72209, this is for a heat for rental. Was this for the fire? Who is four units? 72209?
The Hep-10.
The Hep-10? Yeah, was it Hep-10, four of them for the fire or?
I don't know. That may be for the municipal building for the air, keep the air.
For Corliss Avenue?
Yes. That's what I believe it is.
Do we know if it's a rental or a purchase?
I believe it was a rental.
Yeah, I.
Vicki, those units still being checked?
Yes.
What, they are? And who were they being checked by?
The air, air problem.
Yeah, okay.
RT environment.
RT environment. Okay, thank you.
I'm trying to check on that. Thanks. 72212, you purchased the light tower?
That was in last year's budget.
It was in the budget for what purpose?
For the public works and recreation, right, for the train.
Okay, at evenings?
Evenings, yes.
For the train?
Yep.
For visibility, I suppose?
Yes. Because it was stolen.
72219, this was, so I did a little research on this. This was for the fire, I knew that. But when I search this, will this get billed back to the property owner?
Councilman, Council Vice President.
Or put a lien?
That's a good question. I don't know. I had some questions myself because I believe Mr. Dowd was called out that evening by Mayor Ellis. I'm not sure what was done that evening or what would constitute the $2,064. Does anyone know?
They said that there was a main gas line going through the building. I don't know if he did that or not, but I don't see anything dug up. I mean, there's a small patch, about a four-by-four patch here across the street, but I don't see anything dug up, but.
$2,064 is a hefty bill.
I'm asking because I noticed the property taxes haven't been paid for the last two quarters of 2017. So, if we're putting a lien against the property for that amount, who's going to bear with that?
When it came through, a couple months ago, for the fire, the emergency to earth the street up, I said to bill the owner and that's what, so this should go against the builder, or the owner.
So, should we pull, should we pull this for right now?
I recommend it.
Yeah.
Just to clear until next meeting.
Absolutely. Okay, so you want to make the motion, Councilman?
Yeah, I'll make the motion just to clear, for clearer vacation before we pay.
Okay, I'll second that.
72225, Division of State Police, this is the background check and it's listed under Section 8. Did we hire someone new?
No.
Do these traditionally get done every three years?
Yes, they do it for.
Is it a re-up?
Yes.
Thank you. And the last one, question is, I'd like to poll 72181. As a conflict of interest.
72181 is a bill in the amount of $195.37 to Marianas Pizza Cafe. That's the municipal alliance program?
Yes.
You say it's conflict?
Yes. Unless they were doing doctrine of necessity.
So, if you have a conflict on that bill, you give it steam.
Okay.
You give it on that bill? Should we just pull from the bill list? Yes, sir.
If you mean all of these bills, is that what you mean?
It's all one bill.
It's all one, you're right, that's what I meant. That was billed, if you see that, that was billed to the municipal alliance, the money that we give them, and that's supposed to be deducted from the amount that we give them.
Okay, so then we give that to the municipal alliance, the municipal alliance makes a check out to?
No, we give them a sum of money per year and that's supposed to be deducted from their.
So, they have set side account that they go against?
Right.
Okay, okay. Councilman, your conflict, did you want to explain that or?
No.
Okay.
It's all enough.
Councilman Lutz, anything else?
Nope.
Councilman Davis?
I just wanted, Vicki, did for 72221, did we already see if we can install an insurance fund to cover that claim?
7221.
Is it fair to call, so we pass a resolution authorizing that? Am I correct?
Yes, that's our.
Okay. That's it, thank you.
Okay, so we can vote on the bill list amended with?
Procedure, I think we just have to vote to amend the list and then vote to adopt as amended.
With the line item being 72219.
Yes.
Be called for clarification.
Did we second that?
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Vicki.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McBenn?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President, Peter Almera? Abstain, thank you. Council President, Phillipsburg.
I will abstain as well.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, moving forward, we have the public comment on agenda items. So, this is public comment on agenda items only. Mr. Minor, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Joe Minor, end of 394 South Main Street in Phillipsburg. The present, I'm referring to 2018-08, the present local ethics law has an ethics authority that is independent of any local authority. It is, quote, "the local finance board of the Division of Local Government Services, Department of Community Affairs," end quote, "of the state of New Jersey." The existing code of ethics can be summarized as, "Town officers and employees must keep public interests before private interests and no favor for favor. Having no judicial authority, their complaint resolution is to publish their findings. The new ethics law would replace the present remote ethics authority with a local authority that is virtually under the control of the town council." That is, three of the five members of the town council can write and pass a new code of ethics. They would have control of the appointment of four of the six members of the committee. The committee would direct investigations with the right to subpoena, bill the business administrator for all investigative expenses, and make a judgment that fines a person all by a four-of-six vote. If this were the civil or criminal case, four of six would not be enough. This would cost money and move from legislation to judgment. You are not the judiciary. Please consider leaving it go and using the present system, which is more in line with an oversight versus a law.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Mr. Tivin, state your name and address for the record.
Bill Timmons, 230 South Main Street. 218-06 and 07, I understand this is the first reading. I have a question or an opinion on 07. That would be double billing permit holders if they were using other facilities in the town. 06 is basically the same way that is or was currently being used with the previous parking authority. You had one permit that was good anywhere in any of the town lots. 07 indicates permits to be used exclusively in the lots that we proposed. If the people were using those lots and decided to go to another venue, i.e. the riverfront or Market Street or whatever, they would have to pay for parking again during any of the events in town. So, in fact, being double billed. They're also finding one set of permits and have them ran out annually, yearly, whatever, would be one cost to break them down into smaller batches color-wise indicating various other lots. I think your costs would go up tremendously just to purchase the permits. And as a side note, as being a businessman in town, as a service business, and to help other service businesses, I would also propose as part of this, to have the ability for a local service business in town who buys a permit, maybe it would be a little bit extra, that would be allowed to be using that permit on a service vehicle to be parking anywhere in the lots or downtown while they're conducting business so not to be penalized. I believe Easton does the same thing so that you're able to work at a location, your permit would be good there or anywhere in the municipal lots. That's item number one.
Just for clarification, Mr. Tivin, the only parking ordinance before us today are the one that are, is the one that's lot exclusive. The other ordinance that you're referring to is the actual repeal. We have to repeal the parking ordinance again tonight. We have to start over. I did ask the mayor to veto so we can start the process over again and they still have the revenue for the train?
No, I'm talking about 06 or 07. You have both listed here.
I do. 07 is the repeal of the existing ordinance. 06 is the reduction of an ordinance that is not lot-specific. In other words, not riverside wave parking permits that are issued or Main Street lot parking permits that are issued. It's a town of Phillipsburg parking.
Right, right.
That we utilize throughout town.
That's what I am proposing, that is, to be adopted rather than lot-specific.
Okay.
And the second thing is 250, or 21855, from what I'm reading it, and maybe I'm 100% wrong, it's costing us $19,400, or $545 for recycling?
No, we get that back. That's a grant that we get back.
Okay, but then what's the $3 per ton? Is that part of that or are we paying?
It's part of that.
We paying extra?
No, if I understand it correctly, if I'm right or wrong, that money at the end of the year, we get back from the state as a recycling.
Yeah, because I questioned that prior previously and I was told that, you know, it'd cost us to dump. Well, if it cost us to dump, why do we recycle? According to previous meetings.
Does the dump, will we get this back?
Yeah, we get it back, definitely. Because I asked.
Previously, you said, no, we didn't.
I asked Bob that too, when he said, will we put that back at the end of the year from the state?
Okay.
The other question is, is I beg the difference with the city of Easton with parking? Because 99% of my business is in Easton. You have to pay and it's a quarter every 15 minutes, no matter where you are, who you are, or anything. They used to give you a $3 thing per day that you just put over the meter, no more. You've got to pay a big amount. All contractors have to pay. So, just so you know that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tivin. Mr. Brissette, state your name and address for the record, please.
Emil Brissette, 94 Bowman Street in Phillipsburg. I have a couple comments about, first one is about 2018-06, about the parking ordinance. I'm assuming this is something that somebody else would have picked up, but we haven't talked about it yet. On the first page, it talks about the South Main Street lot adjacent to St. Philip and St. James, it should be St. James, okay? So, somebody picked that up. I also noticed that on the transit lot, that it says that there will be, there will be no fee to park, so we will be losing, it's out of agreement, we're going to be losing income from that lot. So, I hope that that will be addressed when you, the explanation for that will be addressed when we discuss.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to support some comments that Mr. Minor made about the Ethics, I think it's Ethics Commission or whatever, Ethics Board.
2018, that's right.
And it seems to me that it would be more objective to have the existing authority to be the ones to review any ethics complaints and additionally, on the, next to the last page, 5317, letter C, it talks about the Ethics Board may appoint employees, including independent counsel and clerical staff. So, it sounds like right now it doesn't cost us money the way it's being done, but that it probably will cost the town money. So, along with not being objective, we're also going to end up having to pay more for that. So, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Brissette. Anyone else? Okay, so moving forward, we are ordinance number 2018 dash zero four, which is the second reading for the calendar year 2018, ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
So, move.
I will second.
Second.
Councilman Davis seconds. Roll call, Vicki. Is there a discussion?
Public hearing.
Public hearing. There being none, we can move forward. Roll call, Vicki.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McBenn?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President, Peter Almera?
Yes.
Council President, Phillipsburg.
Yes. Okay, we have ordinance 2018 dash zero six, ordinance of the town of Phillipsburg, County of Orange, state of New Jersey, amending Chapter 67 Vehicles and Traffic, Section 28, parking lots of the code town of Phillipsburg.
Point of information, I mean, Council President.
Sure.
I believe the way that we dispose of 2018-05 and 2018-06A was to table them?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Zero five was.
The rental. Well, we had two ordinances, or three ordinances that were tabled at our previous meeting, I believe. One was about rental properties. Two were out.
That was tabled until the work session.
Right, so did we specifically postpone until work session or did we table?
It was my understanding that was postponed until the work session. So, you did have, you did table six and 6A.
Okay. Yeah, so I do believe that this is a matter of formality, we will have to dispose of both of these in some capacity.
In other words, Councilman, are you asking me to untable 2018 dash zero six?
I'm saying that they both, 6A is not listed in the agenda, but I believe that we still, it exists as an action that the council has to take because it's been tabled and has to be disposed of at some point.
You can move it tabled because it was tabled before, so it's currently tabled. You can move it on the table if the council is inclined to adopt 2018 dash zero six in its form or as amended by the council at first reading, if you move to untable it. And the second, it would be placed with the council for consideration. At that point, there can be a motion to adopt a second, and that is going to be made. Two of those ordinance tonight, those ordinance can be made and placed into the body of the ordinance for consideration for second reading at the appropriate time. 2018 dash zero six, just for the benefit of the public, is the parking lot ordinance. And that was the version that was presented that was a town-wide, not lot-specific parking permit for those persons purchasing permits to utilize within the town parking lots. And that was 6A or? Six. Okay, so zero six. Both zero six and 6A, and zero six A were tabled. On the agenda tonight is 2018 dash zero six. That is still, as Councilman Davis pointed out, still taken on the table. Whether the council can act on it, chooses that. I have a motion to untable 2018. 2018 zero six, I'll motion to untable.
Second.
Point of discussion. Roll call, Vicki.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McBenn?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President, Peter Almera?
Yes.
Council President, Phillipsburg.
Yes. 2018 dash zero six is untabled and is now before the body for consideration. We move it first, second, and we have discussion as to the contents of the ordinance.
Did we move it at the prior meeting, Councilor? Do you recall?
Did we move, you worked.
No, I believe in order to table it, we moved it and then tabled it, or did we take action directly, table it? Can't recall.
Actioned directly, table it because it's my recollection.
Thanks.
I just want to ask it, okay? Want to get it over with. All right, so are you ready to make a motion? And a second, and it's open for discussion. All right, I'll motion. Amendments to the ordinance, the council wants to have it take, because we do that now at first reading, and then as amended, if it's amended, it'll be published for second reading, consideration at the time.
I have a second.
And so, motion of the president seconded by Councilman Davis, this is now before discussion for the body. It's a first reading, so it's not open for public hearing for the residents.
May I have a?
Yes, Councilman Lutz.
The transit lot, I would like to say now there will be no fee to park at the transit lot unless we get a contract from the transit.
That is correct.
Okay. But I'd like to have that in here, please.
Councilman, just to, you're aware, I did, again, I did speak with them and they are redoing the lease, rewriting the lease in August of this year, and we had agreed with the mayor that we would amend it at that time.
Well, no harm in putting it in.
Correct, I agree. If it's in writing, at least we have it as happened. I agree.
The other thing is, there's nothing here about the meters from the Black Bridge to Union Square. They should be in here too because the meters are, there's people using those meters all the time for the trains and they're not paying anything for it. So, I think we should put that into it with the meters. I think there's 80 meters, I think I counted 80 meters here, from the Black Bridge to Union Square.
And the lots.
No, they're on South Main Street.
Because it's one specific, I believe, the lots.
It is.
Although we have to amend another one?
Might be another section.
Right, we do.
Yes.
Right, so this ordinance is just as about parking lots. We do have, we do parking, and she said they'd bring that up in his report so we can address that as well.
Can we do that for this meeting, that four ordinance for chaplain's three meters?
I'll talk to you on.
Thank you very much. That's all I have, thank you.
I also haven't, but I can wait, Councilman, but I would just caution moving on meters that may not be operational.
Because then, we, we need, we need either the company that oversees the contract, if that's even still in existence, or whoever the authority is to oversee the contract, or oversee the meters since they are operational. Because if I go down there and I put a mon, I put my money in there and it's not working, and then I get ticketed, and I have, I have a meter that is not working, that's the town's fault. And that's our fault for packing out. So, six, two thousand and eighteen oh six, great. As far as extending that to the meters, or if we're going to move that to a working session, that's fine. We're going to include that, we can move forward. But it's, it's, it's on whomever the authority is to ensure that they are working properly, every single one of them. Then I would move forward on passing on how we're going to handle them into the ordinance.
Most of them are.
Most is not good enough for me.
Those are newer meters.
Yeah, most isn't good enough for me. All.
As far as I know, they don't work.
Sorry.
We have to deal, took it down and check them out, make sure they're all working. If not, we have to get them working. And the funniest thing about it, they're only a quarter an hour. So, that's, that's pennies. That's pennies.
We have paid about five dollars to park in our own town today. Councilman Davis?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Davis?
Yeah, one question. It will be up specifically to the municipal parking lots will be open from eight AM until eight PM. Does that mean that we're going to close off access at eight PM? Or we're going to stop enforcement of the fees at eight PM?
I believe from our work session that was they're going to stop the fees after eight PM.
Could, could we reword that particular section and say that the municipal parking lot fees will be enforced from eight AM to eight PM? So, I could make a motion to amend as a disgust.
I also, if you-
So, the motion for Councilman Davis is a second?
Second.
Except for the train situation.
I'll second. Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Deidre Alman?
Yes.
Council President Holber?
Yes.
Councilman, Vice President Deidre Alman, do you have anything?
Of course I do.
All right.
Just a couple of comments. Because I hit all these lots this weekend. Sicker Street Lot, that needs an additional handicap. That does not meet ADA standards. So, that one does need an additional handicap identified. So, being we called out specifically how many, I'm assuming these are right in-
No, they're not. And I appreciate bringing that up. Because that was one of the points I was going to make.
It's a big point in terms of size, so.
Yeah, it's a large point throughout, is that the town engineers requested that we amend the ordinance at this time to stipulate that the parking lots will shall have designated handicapped parking spaces in accordance with the ADA as determined by the town engineer.
Okay.
So, we do on the bus resolution for all the lots, and we'll amend the ordinance accordingly.
Correct.
Okay. Are we going to do that now, or?
There's a motion to do that. Yeah, I would recommend that motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Lutz? Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Deidre Alman?
Yes.
Council President Holber?
Yes.
Okay, also, so going down the Riverside Way. So, one of two things regarding the, consistent in twelve reserved parking spaces for use by employees, blah, 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 blah. And then we go into some-
That's not what it says, Councilman.
I know. Because there's a storm coming. As well as, there's talk about placards. I'm wondering if we could do something different on this. Twelve is a little inadequate. What I think I'd like to see or propose is, can we, rather than having separate placards just for special parking, special people, why don't we just use the municipal parking permit that's already in place, that people can purchase? And we designate twenty-five spots, so that, that can be kiosk parking, or you can use your permit.
Councilman, I believe that we had agreed with the business owners on the twelve, which is why it appears this way in, in the ordinance. And actually, what we had agreed upon for the twelve, I had spoken to the building owner the next day, who had four other units that aren't being used currently, but he's bringing people in. So, I, I agree with the twenty-five. And this was Councilman Lutz's idea, I believe, that we were selling them the permits. Is that correct, Councilman Lutz?
Yeah.
Right. So, I'd like to, actually, not to piggyback off you, Council Vice President, if you don't mind. I'd like to up the Riverside Way lot, reserve parking spaces for use to twenty-five, so it can, when Mr. Baum has tenants, he can then use those parking, those-
And allow him for growth.
Correct.
When I was down there, we talked about forty-five employees per, that twenty-five would-
And he supports the parking kiosks. He, he was very, he was very thankful that, that we took the time to speak with him. I just think it would be business-friendly to go ahead and accommodate him. I don't believe that he's going to be using all twenty-five spaces.
I don't either. I just want to make sure that people can park there if it's able.
I don't see why.
That's the same way in the summertime with Jimmy Sockball.
Yes.
They might have extra working for the summer. So, that should be enough for just about everyone.
I agree.
The only thought I had was, I know right now, they've got two separate sets of permits downtown. And one is not being enforced and ticketed again. So, I don't want the same problem for the people that are getting ticketed if we're going to have a placard versus a parking permit.
Okay, so-
Just seems like extra cost to keep it going, that's all.
So, you don't want to charge the dollar, you want them to be twenty-five reserved for free?
No, not for free.
Okay.
No, not for free. Definitely not. Whatever the permit costs are.
Which was the dollar that Councilman Lutz proposed. So, twenty-five spaces allotted for Riverside Way for the businesses in the amount of a dollar? Okay.
But I just think using the permit and allowing them to purchase, that would make it easier for everybody, rather than a separate permit.
Agreed. I think that's what the state is.
Okay. Is it, because it said placards somewhere. So, I just don't want to see two sets of information and they don't know how to enforce it together. Yeah.
So, did you have anything else with regard to Riverside Way?
Of course, yeah.
Okay.
Just one.
Sure.
Can we look into seasonal permits for the boats and tractors?
Yes, that is something we did discuss and spoken with Mr. Hinkle. I'm not sure if Mr. Hinkle is here. Yes, Mr. Hinkle is here. I would also, I would support that for a seasonal fisherman pass to park there. I'd like to see the fishermen continuously to come to Phillipsburg, use our boat ramp, and then frequent our businesses. If we continue to ask them to pay, they're going to go somewhere else. And as of right now, the lots, well, they, they can go across the river, and that's not where I want them to go. If we can do a seasonal permit, I think that would be advantageous to the Town of Phillipsburg, to the fishermen. And then we'd still be able to keep them here if they would frequent our businesses.
So, first, do you need a motion to change twelve to twenty-five?
Vice President Deidre, at this point?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so, we have veto of the ordinance that deleted the original, as it stood right now, parking ordinance. Still currently in that background because of veto.
Correct.
So, there's no danger of losing funds because of a curiation of that ordinance. I don't know if this is still in effect.
Right.
We have, of course, tonight, a first reading of two thousand and eighteen dash zero six. And there have been a number of quality, in my opinion, comments that we made regarding revisions that should be made to the ordinance. In light of the fact that we're not faced with a loss of revenue due to the repeal of the existing ordinance, my suggestion would be to table both two thousand and eighteen dash zero six and two thousand and eighteen dash zero seven for consideration at the next regular business meeting. And we can consider this at the work session meeting on March thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Where we come together with a comprehensive, as-presented ordinance, covering all the concerns of the council, the needs that need to be addressed. And then introduce at the meeting on the twentieth for first reading, along with an introduction for first reading at that point of two thousand and eighteen dash zero seven.
Right. Council, my fear though is with the season coming up for the fishermen, I believe it starts, Mr. Hinkle, can you help me?
Well, when the, when the shad start running, you're going to have people coming to the parking lot.
Is it, is it able to be able-
And that could be anytime. I mean, we get the snow and stuff like that. Runs off, it gets warm, the shad can be here in the middle of March.
So, that's why I would politely disagree to try to get this process rolling. Because I fear if we continuously put things off, then we're no better than our predecessors. And I, I don't want to go down that road. If that's okay, I'd like to, if council will oblige.
So, the Council Vice President Deidre Alman's motion would be to amend the ordinance to permit instead of twelve reserved parking spaces.
Twenty-five.
As to the Riverside Way lot. And then the second?
Would be the seasonal permit for a fee of? Council Vice President?
I think the suggested fee I saw from the mayor was twenty-five dollars.
I would agree with the mayor with twenty-five dollars. Mr. Hinkle, how's that sound to you, fisherman?
Sounds great. I like the five bucks, you know.
I'd like to give it to you for five dollars, I would feel as though the mayor would-
It's two thousand and eighteen, you know, it's kind of-
Just season, seasonal, and we require a fisher, we require them to have a active fisherman license in order to obtain that.
And what would be this, what would be the fishing season? In terms of-
I guess we'd have to go with opening day. What, what is fishing season exactly?
Well, you know, fishing season is all year long, actually. There's guys that go down there in the wintertime, and there's guys from-
Right, so we have to keep it practical.
The shad will start, shad are in the river right now, as a matter of fact. They're, they're probably in the river.
So, then it wouldn't be seasonal, would it, just do that all year round?
Well, this is a boat license, this is not.
So, we would be going April to, April to November?
Yeah, April, April first would be a good time to start.
Okay, so April first till November first? And then, Council, Councilman Lutz had said that it should be twenty-five dollars for residents? Thirty-five dollars for council venue residents?
Without town.
Out of town, I'm, I'm sorry.
I'm not happy with that.
Do you live somewhere else?
Yes.
You need to move to Phillipsburg, Mr. Hinkle.
I've lived here for, uh, let's see, except for the last three years. I think I've turned, I did my time.
I understand.
They gave me a parole, and that, you know, now I'm-
Well, we want you back. I, I would, um, I don't know. Move us a minute?
Got all that, Rich?
I have, I have to debate on one thing. Do we have a motion to second, sorry, on the amendments?
I'll motion.
Second.
Council?
My original understanding at the work session was that the placard system was going to be a pseudo-permit for the business owners, and it wasn't going to be reserved spaces. So, are we going to specifically sign spaces at the lot that reserve them for the business owners? According to this, this language?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Because I just, if we're going to do twenty-five plus the eleven, that means of the hundred metered spaces, we're giving up thirty-six. So, over a third of it is permanently reserved for the businesses.
No, I think what we said was that it would be either permit or pay.
And I think we need to clarify that language, because it says reserved for use by employees. So, it could, maybe we can amend that to, to say that it could be reserved or for meter parking.
So, what we're doing then is we're removing the eleven thirty-minute free parking spaces. I think what happens here then is we get confused, right? Because if we have twenty-five parking spaces that are reserved, how are we to tell? Are we using a placard? Because then I could drive down there and park in one of those spaces. So, there has to be some type of identification system.
Yeah, my understanding was that the entire lot would be available to the business owners, but the placard would be their way of paying for their spot, as opposed to separately designating spots for the businesses.
Right.
Apart, apart from the, the thirty-minute free. So, that's my objection, is the language makes it appear as if, that there's going to be, again, by, by discount, thirty-six spots completely separated only for use by those businesses. So, I think that we should clarify, there should be, I'm sure there should be, there will be twenty-five placards allowed to park anywhere in that lot.
So, it makes sense.
I, I mean, I don't have a problem with it being thirty-six until we see more highly, highly traffic.
Oh, no, sorry, I, I apologize. I, I might have misspoke. We have the twenty-five reserved placards plus the eleven thirty-minute free spots, which is a total of thirty-six.
Right.
So, I, my, my, my suggestion is that we amend the amendment to, to, to keep the twenty-five. And in addition to that, specify that it's not exclusive to the businesses. It's the twenty-five placards so that they can park in the lot in a pseudo-permit.
I think my fear with that, Councilman, again, is the eleven thirty-minute free parking spaces would be for patrons, whereas the twenty-five would be for the employees, owners. So, yeah, you would be correct by assuming that thirty-six would be used. At this point in time though, I don't, I don't see, I don't believe that all thirty-six spots would be used, however it could be. So, but have you, have you been down there?
Today.
Well, I mean, I, I know during the train that it's a highly popular area, right? But as of right now, the, the lot is barely being used. So, I mean, once we start becoming an attraction, we get more attractions down there, we can certainly revisit this. But I think for right now, it's, it's more friendly to the businesses, to the residents, to the fishermen.
Okay.
I'm certainly not opposed to amending it later on down the road, and just trying to keep it practical. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, I mean, I just wanted to speak, I agree with that. I, that was my understanding, so I'll be voting based on that, my understanding of the work session. I don't think that this interpretation is in alignment with what we had said at the work session.
Sure. All right, well, I appreciate that, Councilman.
So, that was, there's still a discussion on the-
Okay, so then the amendment was made by Councilman Deidre Alman. It was motion to second, we can part it for discussion, we can do a roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McFay?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Vice President Deidre Alman?
Yes.
Council President Holber?
Yes. Now, I have one amendment. The only thing I don't see, and that we had agreed upon, was that the shad tournament would be free for four days. And that's just, I don't see it in here.
I think it said-
I, I'd really rather specify, and the only reason I'd rather specify is because if it's in writing, they have to adhere to it. Right? So, if we start to change the language for special use permit, then the fishermen could essentially end up being lost.
Well, that's an easy one.
Yes. So, I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to specify the shad tournament being free for four days.
If I could just make a suggestion. Rather than calling out a specific event, because as things pick up, we may have more events, perhaps we just give the ability to declare free days for parking. I know when I was in Somerville, the mayor put a blanket statement out, all parking is free, Merry Christmas.
Right, I think that would be more random, like special use or at the mayor's discretion.
Yes.
This would be just simple, simply so we could specify the shad tournament, because I don't want the fishermen to get lost in preparation.
And not just qualify as a special event, maybe we-
Correct.
Bobby, we have the fifth day to reward the prizes on the fifth day.
Right, but at the work session, we had agreed to four. So, I'm trying to keep it fair, that was, at the date, we did agree at four at the work session.
That, I don't think that was discussed. I really don't remember that being discussed.
I could go back to the video, actually, I don't think that I can, because I believe Mr. Phile's YouTube was removed. I, I believe it was four. If, if it comes up, we can amend it, but for right now, I'd like to keep it four.
There was also a thing in there about the Purple Heart and the disabled veteran.
Yes, they are the-
And the senior citizen.
Yes. That is going to be, the senior citizens and Purple Hearts, they're all free. We were aware of that, they were doing parking spots down there. That was part of the mayor's plan.
That was discussed, yes, so that's still right.
Yes. Yes.
So the the goal of the council moving this ordinance forward...
I can't hear you, sir.
I'm sorry. So the goal, the goal of the council moving this ordinance forward was to address as many of the larger concerns as possible, and as quickly a manner as possible. So there was discussion regarding veterans. There was also discussion regarding senior citizens and the parking fees that might be waived if you were such a person. That is not addressed in this ordinance, this version is before you. That is still something that's being considered legally on my end, as to whether we can go ahead and do that. So what we're trying to do right now is do as much as we can, as quickly as we can, with the understanding that there is still more work to be done.
It's a work in progress.
That's a great way of stating it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I can make that motion?
I just prefer the motion to be to further amend the ordinance to allow for...
To specify the shad tournament.
As free parking in Riverside Way lot only.
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct.
For the four days of the shad fishing tournament.
Yes.
A second.
Discussion.
Say, I, I objected a specific amendment. I prefer council vice president Dejraalmo's suggestion, because I think that we're putting ourselves on dubious legal footing in terms of specifying an event that is apparently more valuable to us than the other ones that are required to park by, by the special event permit.
Can you think of any off the top of your head?
Porco Fluzza, any of the...
Can they park down there during Porco Fluzza, councilman?
What's that? Oh, sorry, you're, you're right. Anything about, um, any of the, the train rides? That's $10 a day, because I, I, I think that, and especially since we are looking at adding more and more events as we go forward, this is a, again, dubious position to put ourselves in.
Counsel, I defer to, for your opinion. I mean, I'm, I'm not... The reason I ask is because I, I do believe that councilman Davis does have a valid argument, and we could find ourselves on the wrong end of a lawsuit. Should, let's say, a group decide that they disagree with us and serve us with a lawsuit, which could happen. Asking for your, your legal opinion here.
Right, so as, as percentage of the council in section three of the body, it talks about parking for boats and trailers. And it talks about the rate for those boats and trailers to park. And then I put in there, in cases of special events, the town may waive the parking fee for trailers. And that was really the intention of that language, was to not be event-specific so much as to address it through the use of the special permit, special events permit, I should say.
Is there a cost for the special events permit?
I'm sorry?
Is there a cost for the special events permit?
There is a cost attendant to that, but they didn't waive that, yes.
And that would be up to the discretion of the mayor?
Well, it's a way to waive the fees, so it'd be up to the discretion of the council. I made a recommendation that we have this event coming up, it's a shad fishing tournament. Requesting the council waive the application fee for the special use permit.
Okay. Mr. Eagle, can you understand the quandary that we find ourselves in?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I've been confused since July, sir.
No, I understand. I, I, I have to agree with councilman Davis, which doesn't happen often. I think that's why he's smiling. Council vice president said she introduced it. I want to take that up with her, councilman. So I guess the, the writing would stand?
My recommendation of the writing, as, as presented, as it relates to, I guess, the non, the non-specification that the shad fishing tournament participants shall be excluded from having to pay any fees, would stand. And I brought this stuff up at the work session. That was my concern, and again, I think my, my words were no offense to the shad fisherman.
That was the promise since day one.
But it still will be free.
Yeah.
It's...
That wasn't a promise from my hand, and my, my concern...
No, I understand. Things, things were said, and then things were, you know, talked about, this was gonna happen, that was gonna happen, and here we are. We're, we're, you know, nine months down the road here.
Well, we are delivering.
I, I, I hope so.
Yes, sir.
I hope so. I just try not to get confused as much anymore with my gray hair.
I'm not gonna touch that one at all, sir.
Counsel, question?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if you notice, if you go to Allentown, to Fairgrounds, you go to there, and you go to City of Easton, you're paying. It doesn't matter what it is, what type of event it is, you're paying to park. So it really doesn't matter. I mean, yes, Phillipsburg has been, they come over here, but we kinda wanna stop that, and for them to use the kiosks, they go over to Easton. But no matter where you go, everybody has to pay their fair share. And we're kind of looking the other way a little bit. Because if the fishermen went to Allentown to fish on the Lehigh, they have to pay. If they go to Bethelm, they have to pay. They go to Easton, they have to pay. If you come to Phillipsburg, it's for free.
Just for that four days. It's not like, you know, if Allentown...
Yeah, but I'm not saying that. I'm, I'm not saying that. And it's been for free a long time, so we're making the step that we can get some money into the town coffers. And now I feel we're kind of giving it away, in, in a sense. But if you understand what I'm coming to...
I do, councilman, that is noted. I guess my only counterargument would be...
I mean, yeah, I mean, it was promised.
Right.
Don't, don't get me wrong, it was promised this year. Maybe next year, we gotta look into something a little bit different.
Well, maybe next year, we can take it up the river, or down the river, or wherever.
There you go.
You know, it's, it was one of these things.
Mr. Eagle, I understand. If you want, though, during public comment, you're welcome to come up and speak. I do understand your frustration. I also understand the viewpoint of council as well, and I do think that we need to come to some type of agreement with all parties to make this work. And I do believe, I, I see that on the horizon. This council does work well together. I, I do believe that it will work itself out. All I ask is that you put your faith in us, and I know this, I know that's tough. I know that really is tough. But I'm telling you now, so far, we've delivered, and we have every intention on continuing that. Thank you. So I can unmotion my motion?
No, we have a motion second. We can, we, I think we have to vote.
Okay. So this was the motion to amend, this was my original motion to...
Specifically include the exemption for the shad fishing tournament.
That is correct.
The wooden boat, so if motion in the second, can we throw it down?
Which is what we were, yes, so. Roll call, vote biggie.
Councilman Lutz?
No.
Councilman McBeg?
The, the system of both. For councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Council Vice President Dejraalmo?
No.
Council President Holber?
No. Are we moving forward?
Are there any other proposed amendments that you want to...
Are there any other proposed amendments?
You have one?
Okay, I don't wanna get killed by the crowd. There is a snow emergency, and we need to rush this along.
Excuse me, council president, can I make an operational comment?
Not right now.
Because people can't hear in the audience. You're doing a great job. People can hear you.
Sure.
Pretty much everyone else. People can't hear, is that correct?
Yep, we can't hear you, it's not very bad here.
Okay, so just, in other words...
Crack up the volume.
Yes, sir. I, I feel kinda funny doing it, but I know that that's the only way we can be heard, so. Okay. Thank you.
I think you'd be speaking to the mic.
You can hear better.
What amendment was just shot down?
That was the, well, we're still keeping the shad tournament for four days for free, but we're not specifying it in the ordinance.
Oh.
That's what that was. It was the language, so we don't get sued.
That's, that's the, the hearing part. My hearing is terrible anyhow, but...
I understand.
I appreciate, I appreciate your support, sir, coming up and saying that. Thank you.
Okay, moving forward, since there are no further amendments, I do believe, do we need to do anything with the veto council? This is the first time I've ever seen this.
We gotta, we gotta adopt the ordinance as amended.
Oh, right.
I just wanna run through the amendments, so that we're clear for, so that we're clear for the record, thank you.
Yes.
So the first amendment would be to amend, the ordinance shall be amended to provide for the designation of handicapped parking spaces in each individual lot in accordance with the ADA as determined by the town engineer. That's the first amendment. The second amendment shall be, I'm just gonna read in order as I go down my, my list, changing the Riverside Way lot 12 reserved parking spaces to 25 reserved parking spaces for use by employees of local businesses by the Riverside Way lot. Keeping the issuance of placards by the town for such businesses to provide to their employees. And you'll note that those placards are transferable amongst the employees as a fee associated with the issuance of each placard. The third amendment shall be for the seasonal permit of $25 per annum during the fishing season of April 1st through November 1st for a town of Phillipsburg residents with an increase fee of $35 per annum for that same fishing season for out-of-town residents. The fourth amendment shall be to amend the transit lot regulations that says currently there shall be no fee to park in the transit lot. That shall be amended to read, "There shall be no fee to park in the transit lot absent permission from New Jersey Transit, allowing for the collection of fees for the parking of vehicles in the lot." And I believe those are the amendments which were suggested by the council and adopted and approved by the council.
There's one more. Is that the municipal parking lots will be open, is amended?
Oh, I'm sorry, councilman Davis, correct. So the municipal parking lots shall be open. Actually, I haven't read, the collection of fees for municipal parking lots will be, will be from 8:00 AM until 8:00 PM daily. And that's the amendment that was proposed and adopted by the council as well. So five amendments total.
I will make the motion to move as amended?
Second.
Counselman, are, are we having a Robert Cruz order issued?
Yeah, we already, we already made the motion, so we already adopted the amendments, and we have the motion, so we can just, we can just vote.
Thank you, councilman, you're welcome. Roll call, vote biggie.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McBeg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Dejraalmo?
Yes.
Council President Holber?
Yes. That was trying, right? So moving forward, the next is the, the, the delete.
We have to work on the veto, because we have to... We don't need to do any, no, run it through, run it through.
Okay, so we can move to 2018-07, ordinance of the town Phillipsburg County, owner of state of New Jersey, amending chapter 67 vehicle traffic. Section 28, parking lots of the code of the town of Phillipsburg, in order to delete subsection 1 entitled Municipal Lots Payment Required.
Some move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, vote biggie.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McBeg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Dejraalmo?
Yes.
Council President Holber?
Yes. Excellent, motion carries. We will then move forward to ordinance 2018-08, in ordinance repealing chapter 53 Ethics Code of Up and replace with a new chapter 53 Municipal Ethics Board of the Code of the Town of Phillipsburg, New Jersey. I will make a motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I may start?
Yes, councilman Lutz, please start.
Joe said it exactly right. I feel it's gonna be very costly, number one, and number two, there could be a large conflict in who you pick for, for the jury, or, yes, for the jury. I would like to keep it as is. Thank you.
Council Vice President Dejraalmo?
If adopted, we just need to put this into the budget, because it is stated that we should be, sorry. If this is adopted, we need to make, on Thursday, we need to address it in the budget item, so that we include it in the budget item. I believe it would be more similar to the Historic Commission that was adopted, where there actually are no fees, but there still are specific line items to address it, should it occur. That's all I have.
Councilman, please.
I'm good.
Councilman Davis?
Yeah, I just wanna echo councilman Lutz's comments. I think that, well, specifically, just to, to point out, all the members of this board are appointed by this council. And the way that this law is written, it gives judiciary, executive, and legislative authority to this body, which I think is inappropriate for the local venue. I think that we do need the impartiality of an outside entity evaluating whether actions taken by any member of this government are ethical or not. And to give authority to a partisan body to appoint this locally is a disservice to this community. And again, just to point out, they will be able to adopt their, if we do move forward with this ordinance, this ethics board would be able to adopt their own ethics law, independent of council's purview, to send to the DCA for approval, and then would be able to subpoena and find people guilty based on whatever rules that they make. I think that the law that's been passed by the legislature is comprehensive in terms of regulating local government activity, and she would continue to rely on the state to provide that as an independent entity.
Thank you, councilman. I politely disagree with both of you and councilman Lutz. I do believe that we can find six qualified individuals here in the town of Phillipsburg. I also feel that the way it's currently set up, there is a backlog. And when ethics complaints are made from the town of Phillipsburg, from any of the residents, sometimes they don't get hurt until maybe we're out of office, maybe it's too late. But I do believe, administrations aside, ethics violations happen. And I do think that we do need to be policed at some point in time. I've been accused myself of making so. So, you know, that, that rightfully so. I do believe in that the constituents that I represent have every right to subpoena me or, or make a complaint, and have it go before the body, and have me subpoenaed for me to answer for my actions. The way I feel is if I'm not doing anything wrong, I got nothing to worry about. So with that being said, we can move forward to a vote. Roll call, vote biggie.
Councilman Lutz?
No.
Councilman McBeg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Council Vice President Dejraalmo?
Yes.
Council President Holber?
Yes. Next is the consent agenda. So all, all of the items on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by the motion of the council in one roll call vote. There won't be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests an item removed for consideration. Councilman Lutz, do you have an item that you would like to see removed for consideration?
Of course, 2018-53, we have no information, no new information about the Louisiana operator license.
Okay, so councilman Lutz would like to remove 2018-53? Council Vice President Dejraalmo? Do you have anything you'd like to see removed from the consent agenda?
Uh, not necessarily remove it. I just have a question. Is 2018-52 because of me? Yes.
Biggie?
Thank you. For the record, I made a donation to the animal shelter, not realizing they need to set up a separate account for it, so...
You had to go before the Metiscolics Committee on that one, councilman?
Unknowingly, I wanted to feed the animals in the animal shelter, so I gave my last paycheck to the animal shelter, so that's, this is in regards to... Just so you know where it's coming from.
Just to point, this is, I think, new business.
I did skip new business, councilman, I apologize. It's okay with you? Do you mind if I go back since I?
Sure.
Okay. So we can go through the consent agenda first?
Sure.
Thank you. So 2018-53 has been removed, 2018-52 is Dan Ellis' fault, and Councilman McVeigh, do you have anything that you'd like to see removed from the consent agenda?
No, I'm with Councilman Lutz, I had 53 year mark myself.
Councilman Davis?
No.
And that would be a no for me, I'm in agreement with my colleagues. So we can discuss 2018-53, a resolution to provide for an application for limousine operators license for Halim E. Bori. And we can start the discussion, I guess we have to make a motion?
We have to make a motion.
Yes, we do.
Some move.
Was there, you don't think we have a motion to remove it, or to remove it? Motion, we will discuss it, motion to move it for adoption, so I can, it can be discussed.
Right, I'll motion to move.
Second.
We can now open for discussion. Councilman Lutz?
No, we just didn't get any application for the, the right information for the limousine. I know I didn't get it in my packet or anything.
Give it back.
Until we get our information, we should hold off on it.
I will, the clerk did provide me with the information, there were some questions, I will go ahead and give it to you, I think we were going to table this anyway, but I would like to, I'd like to share it with you. Right, so we could probably, if you'd like, we could motion to table it.
I wish my councilman Lutz to table it. Second.
No discussion. I would just like to say that this is not the clerk's fault, this is my fault, I had asked, she had given it to me, I had asked her for this was going to go on to the next meeting, and I had asked it to be on this agenda, so that is my fault, Vicky, I apologize.
Ethics.
The Ethics Committee, you're correct. So we can go ahead and roll call vote, Vicky, to table 2018-53, a resolution to provide for an application for limousine operators license for Halim E. Bori. We can hear this at the work session if you'd like.
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Dieter Almoh?
Yes.
Council President Fulber?
Yes.
So now we can make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some move.
Second.
All are together?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Excellent. Now we can go back to new business. Councilman Lutz, you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Council Vice President Dieter Almoh?
No.
Councilman McVeigh?
I do, I have two things. One, since January 1st, I've been sworn in as a fledgling councilman, I'm trying to get a good understanding on practices and procedures and protocol and try to look halfway smart up here. I thank our council attorney, Wanner, for that, for often helping and leading and helping him. But that being said, I've noticed since November 8th, our deputy counsel to the mayor has been noticeably absent. There is, I hear different things, I want to know somehow, some way, two things, is he still deputy counsel to the mayor? And if he's not, I would ask for his resignation. That's my first.
If I could, councilman, just.
I just want, I want an answer, I mean, I see the mayor's here, but if you, council president, you can address him.
Sure.
If he's still our deputy counsel to the mayor, it's one to come to the meetings, if not, then let's do something.
He has resigned.
He has resigned.
And he'll submit a letter of resignation.
Thank you, sir, that was the word on the street, but I'm, I don't believe in rumors.
Should we make a motion to accept the resignation?
Mayor, if you're with mine, thank you for your service in front of this council. Thank you.
In light of some recent information at past general meetings, we had decided to make a motion under the powers entrusted in us as a council with the authority to investigate matters, I would like to make a motion to investigate the hiring practices of Mayor Stephen R. Ellis. It is, in my opinion and the public's opinion, to better understand how some various recent hires have come to fruition.
Councilman, would this be the ad hoc study?
That would be my recommendation, that'd be a recommendation to council.
I will second.
What's the, what's the specific motion that we're making?
Would you like me to repeat?
Yes.
Please.
Under the powers entrusted in us as a council to investigate matters for the betterment of our town. Period.
I understand, we do have the right of counsel investigation, but it's usually vested in terms of interviews or compelling reports.
Matters relating to the legislative powers entrusted with the council. Yes. I'm motioning to establish an ad hoc committee to look into the hiring practices of Mayor Steve Harles.
I did second.
Thank you.
Okay, councilman, did that clear that up for you?
Yeah, well, my, it just said that we were going to investigate, but didn't specify the methodology by which we're going to be investigating.
Councilman, would you be requesting the mayor to bring the employment records for a certain amount of time, every employment record that he's passed, he's been in office, is there a?
Is that to be your councilman Davis?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it was to you, councilman.
I think at this point in time, I made a motion, it's consecutive, it could be up for discussion, the particulars probably at this point in time may not be the forum for that, especially up against a state of emergency.
Okay.
But we, we're in two months, right, so it's on, it's for discussion, I wrote it.
Okay. So you feel the discussion other than Councilman Davis's remarks? Roll call vote, Vicky.
Councilman Lutz?
I'm going to say no, because he didn't give any information of what he's looking for.
Can't hear.
I'm going to say no, because I don't know what councilman's looking for or what he's trying to uncover. I think this should be done maybe in executive session to find out what avenue he's coming from and what he's trying to accomplish. Until that, I say no.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Council Vice President Dieter Almoh?
Yes.
Council President Fulber?
Yes.
Council Vice President, I mean, Councilman Davis, did you have new business?
Yeah, I don't have the resolution with me, but as Councilman McVeigh mentioned, we do have some issues with some of the meters. I was forwarding some information from the mayor regarding a possible co-op with another municipality to be able to acquire new meters at a discounted rate. I will be forwarding that on to Vicky, the request, and all requests to be discussed under old business, as I'm introducing it at this meeting, for consideration by the council.
Thank you, councilman.
That's all.
Thank you. And now that I see that the mayor's here, I had a question to ask him that probably would have fell under old business, but I would.
We didn't do that, yes, sir.
We didn't do, this is great, okay, I can wait, I can wait. I have nothing for new business.
So under your agenda, you have Mark Bellin, will have on the solar panel, I don't think Mark is here tonight, and he was told, requested that he come at the March 13th meeting, so I was requesting the, from the council, a motion to table this until the 13th work session.
Some moves.
Second.
Roll call voting.
Councilman?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council Vice President Dieter Almoh?
Yes.
Council President Fulber?
Yes.
Now, we are moving forward to old business. Councilman Lutz, do you have anything?
Nothing.
All right, Council Vice President?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Just a few carryover items, I don't know if we have status on them. First development, Stan stated that they were expected to begin the end of February.
Have you seen any activity over on the lot yet?
I saw the stand actually on the way to the meeting tonight, and we had a comprehensive meeting set up, he told me the mayor's here, that they will be joining, the mayor will join the stand in his office next week with about 20 representatives. So things are moving forward according to the plan, but other than that, I don't want to go forward.
Do we know anything about the pilot program with, per own construction, where that stands?
Mr. Meyer?
Say again.
I'm kidding.
I wasn't listening, what did I miss?
There was a question about the pilot program with per own construction.
It's been enacted since I've been coming to council meetings, which is over two years now, so I'm just curious, I haven't seen any activity in that time.
Maybe 20 years.
Every once in a while, he brings it up, and then it goes back down, there's been many, many.
Does anybody mind if I make a phone call and ask?
No, I think, councilwoman, it wouldn't hurt to bring it up to the planning board.
Okay, I'll do that.
That would not be a bad idea.
I'll do that.
Please tell us when.
Sure, you got it, Joe.
Thank you.
Do we know if that berth pound sign has been moved yet?
Uh, no, it's actually, I just saw.
I'm going to draw my notes.
Nope, that's okay, it's still there today. I believe the mayor had promised Mr. Schurbo that he would relocate it.
Okay.
Probably not, it's not the time to do it with the snow, but I do imagine that it will happen. Mayor, will you be removing the berth pound?
As soon as the ground is stalled, it's on.
Okay, is it cemented into the ground?
No.
It's not, okay.
Did we have that condemnation, meeting, you know, next to the moors?
Well, that is a good question. As you know, the last meeting, I had.
Aggressively pursued, yes.
Yes, we had discussed the administrative warrant. Unfortunately, as promised by the mayor, we would, or as agreed to by the mayor, we would meet on Friday and enter the property. So that was going to be my question, where do we currently stand with the moor property and on 32 Heckman? Can you provide us with an update, Mayor?
Sure.
Thank you.
We attempted to have the property condemned or violated as a fire hazard, however, fire chief Richard Hay couldn't do that, there wasn't enough debris to have it determined to be a fire hazard. The co-official was unable to condemn it because it's not structurally, it's unsanitary at this time. There is some problems with the porch. So what we did do is we just took it on and started cleaning it, first floors cleaned, the majority of the basements cleaned, and we still have the upstairs to do, we got a trace there from the cleaning company, and then we promised the moors that we'll follow up with exterminating services once it rains out. But the majority of the debris has been removed as much as we could at this time.
Were there health hazards inside the building?
Absolutely.
There were. Was it to the point where you would need to call in the health inspector?
I believe the moors have tried multiple times, called the county health department, I've tried calling the county health department, and if anybody has any pull of the county, please jump in and call the county health department.
Okay. So I guess my question, council, would be, we were on a 30-day timeframe with the Arx family, and it sounds like the mayor did enter the property and is attempting to clean it up. If the property still is not where we would expect it to be, or where the moors have a better quality of life at the end of that 30 days, what is our next step?
Sure, so you have here the application of powers, right, so the mayor and his administration has the authority to go in utilizing code enforcement and the police powers that are tenanted to the mayor's office. As a council, the council has the authority, really it's much more limited, and that is to have an ability hearings for buildings that are deemed to be unfit, which of course relies upon testimony from the people who are on the ground, if you use that phrase, to present testimony that the property is unfit and in need of repair. So, you know, it seems that the mayor's office is working urgently to address the issue, is going, absent bringing the property owners back in for a habitability hearing and having testimony presented to the council that is actionable and orders to issue, I think it's the only issue goes.
Is there a mayor, I was told that there was bedbugs?
Yeah, there was a report of bedbugs, but as you can tell, you had a couch that was in the living room, a couch since the sun has been covered in the glue.
Okay.
It's been disposed of.
So that would actually constitute a health hazard, right, with the existence of bedbugs in our corridor ordinance?
Again, the county health officials.
Correct. Right, oh no, I'm not referring to you, I'm actually trying to get to the bottom of this for the Moore family. It sounds to me that the, who was the inspector, was it Kevin? And he has found nothing else wrong with the building?
I think that nothing was bad enough to condemn the building to allow us to begin.
Okay, but enough to cite?
I think you could cite a pole out of the porch, yeah, you get all those two things that you would cite.
Okay.
Right now, we're interested in just getting the moors.
Right, so you'd like to clean, but I then think that we probably should continue to cite, if not, and we set the bar for these types of property owners, right? So we don't cite them for the things that are wrong, and we are doing them, we're doing the moors a favor by going to cleaning them, we're also doing the property owner a favor by going to cleaning, we are charging them for this though, yes?
There will be a fee that when we're done, once the majority of the debris is out, the cleaning services coming into, cleaning all the surfaces, the floors, the counters, so we can exterminate the property.
Okay, so I would say that we revisit this issue then at the next council meeting and put this council to see, to take further action. I would hope that we would be able to communicate, Mayor, because I haven't heard from you. Can I have your word?
You'll hear from us by Saturday, you'll have, I'll, people in the house, and we'll issue those facts at the end of the day.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. and Mrs. Moore, are you okay with this?
Both bars of food violations, I missed, I needed the last meeting.
Yes, sir, still have it?
That's all the numbers, they're in violation, and as far as that building is taken right to the town.
Well, I can tell you that I do plan on having a very candid discussion with the inspections department at the next work session, that I would encourage everyone who has been affected by these types of landlords and these types of property owners to attend, because things pile up, and we're seeing it right now, for far too long. So I do have, I would hope that they would be, Mayor, would you, would you be here with them during the work session? Would you ask the inspectors to attend?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Councilman McVeigh? Oh, I don't know, Mayor, Councilman Lutz wanted to know how you had entered, I heard that the police had came in with guns drawn on you.
They have, yes. I had permission to enter the structure, and someone.
Excellent. Well, you're still here, so. Councilman McVeigh?
Good, sir.
Councilman Davis?
No, thank you.
There being, I have no business. So, Mayor, do you have your report?
Just a quick report on electrical outage, we still have 25 homes approximately without electric, depressed JCT electricity data that was restored, and we are preparing to possibly Kennedy for winter storm Riley. I just while I was here, the governor's office called and offered equipment and additional personnel to deal with. If there's any questions, they can call us anytime, say or not.
Mayor, thank you, will there be warming centers again, should we need them?
If the power goes down, if we lose more power, yes, we will. We kept that proclamation of the state of the town emergency in effect.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, the next on the agenda would be the public petitions. Okay, the next on the agenda would be the public petitions?
I'm Joe Meyer, I live at three ninety-two South Main Street in Jonesburg. And the next, and I'm gonna give you a little bit of it to be in deference to the weather. The next meeting of the present committee will be at three ninety-four South Main Street on Sunday, March eleventh, one forty-five to three P.M. It's open to the public. If you attend, you are a member. The agenda this time will be homesteading and rent control. Bring your plan to deal with the vacant house problems in writing. And that's good enough. I'm turning the resident in to be part of the record.
Joe, thank you, I believe that's a record.
Well, it is, no, it's sure.
Mr. Timmons, did you need an address for the record?
Is that microphone on?
Can't hear you.
I didn't click it on, no, I didn't.
I think it's dead. Bill Timmons, two thirty South Main Street. Mr. Lutz, in your neighborhood. On Mercer Street, two doors or three doors down, it was a fourplex that caught fire a couple of years ago. Supposedly to be repaired or replaced or what have you because they had insurance. I would see a rally all the time, you can see right through, one of the houses is not boarded up. And obviously, it hasn't been repaired. What's the status on that or where, where is the town going with that?
We'll have to get us to Mayor.
I believe he ran out of the hallway. He may be speaking with a resident in the hallway. Do you have the address on that? Did you, did you give us the address?
I can get it for you, I don't have it on the...
Okay. Fox and Mercer?
It's on the northern side.
Well, what we can do is find out who owns it and bring them in. Council, would that be correct?
You know, four houses in a row. I don't know whether I can compare it to the Fox and Mercer Street property.
For that ability?
Yes, okay, so, thank you, Mr. Timmons. This would be the public petition, so I need to seek out the young lady who wanted Yellaby with the stop sign.
Yes, she is.
A good kid.
It is time to speak, you would have loved to come up. Yes? I'm in a lot of trouble.
You better believe it, you know, I think you just need new mics here because really, we couldn't hear but mumbling back there from you.
Even with this mic?
We're just mumbling, I'll go yell at you in part.
I can tell you that we are looking at a, a, a new system, okay, that I'd be bringing before council at the next budget hearing to see if we can allot for more professional development, a more professional setup.
For one thing...
Oh, I'm sorry, can you state your name and address for the record?
My name and my address. Ellen Williams. Now I'm in trouble now. Helen Williams, five twenty-five Fisher Avenue, apartment four twenty-four. Heckman House. We were at electric, okay, four days.
Did you have heat?
Cold, the poor people, eighty and ninety-seven years old, in the cold. We were invited to go over to the youth center. How were they gonna get there, walk?
That's a very good comment.
I got the phone call saying to go over, we can go over. How were they gonna get there, by? I'm serious, I'm very serious.
No, wait, I, no, I understand, I believe, I'm not laughing at you. Um, and I do believe that that is a situation that we do need to look into. It doesn't look like the mayor's returned, but I will reach out to him.
I just talked to him.
You did?
Yes.
Did you give him, did you just tell him the same thing you told us?
Yep.
Okay, and his response was?
They're, they'll bust us over or whatever, they'll do what they can for down line.
Okay, and did he give you a method to contact them?
Uh-huh.
Okay, I just want to make sure that all your faces are covered because the last thing I want to see is you freezing. Okay.
But I don't understand this, if you call to talk to Paul Rumberfield, you can't talk to Paul. They give you DeGrauama's number, okay? I know, hello? You call him, you get an answering thing. I will call you back. I don't get no call back. Now, what kind of place are we, you know, we're paying rent here, we're helping keeping the buildings going. I mean, respect your elders. And these are old people that are crippled, cancer and whatnot in our building, it is the truth. It's sad.
What this council could do for you, especially with our connections?
Well, now I see your...
We will speak with housing, and I'm really curious, did they have generators?
Yeah, I thought they had backup generator.
One generator that run the lights and the halls and just the elevator, one elevator working, okay? I don't care, I might get in a lot of trouble now, but...
I don't think you're gonna be in trouble. You're gonna be in trouble.
But if I don't speak up for them, okay, who's gonna do it? I try to get half of them to come over here, but they're afraid to come over.
Folks, if you wouldn't mind just, just show a little bit of respect, if we can just keep it calm?
I picked a girl off the third floor. That she was hollering, help me, help me, she fell in the hallway. Over, over all this, okay? Well, not a girl, but a woman.
Right.
And the thing, I come down the stairway, the elevator wasn't working, or I would have never heard her hollering, help me, help me.
And what was the...
Am I right, Carl?
Well, you know, I guess so, yeah.
Yes.
Then someone did fall at the housing authority and she was fairly seriously injured, nothing that required medical attention maybe. But we're still keeping an eye on her, she's just stubborn, I think.
Did you report the...
But the, the problem is she didn't point out to you that should have been pointed out.
Sir, if you wouldn't mind staying here, do you have an address then for the...
I'm Carl Klein. I live at five twenty-five Fisher Avenue, apartment two oh two.
Thank you.
Not only did, there was no method by which to get us to this warming facility, but we didn't even know it. We didn't know it was available.
I got a phone call, a couple other ones did, but that's about all.
I mean, if it was nothing, I had a vehicle, I drove, nobody's...
But now, that's, that's ridiculous now.
If, just excuse me for one second, Ms. Corcoran, the mayor's list to, for contacts, was it, is, is that because they're signed up on a certain list? I mean, how are they contacted? How do you know who to call?
For, I'm sorry...
So if Mr. Klein wanted to sign up for the phone alerts, right, for the first youth center, the warming center? How, how would he get the phone call?
I believe that they're coming from the nine-one-one reverse call system.
Okay.
It's not really through the mayor's office. I think the police department actually initiates it.
Okay, thank you.
You mean I have to sign up or change?
Thank you.
I live in senior housing, senior disabled housing, I've got to sign up.
Well, I, I, I'm curious, to be honest with you, sir, I don't know, and I don't want to blow smoke. So I do, I wanted an answer and I had asked Mrs. Corcoran, who was nice enough to give us an answer. I would say that's something that I do have to investigate for you, but we are on the brink of a snowstorm this evening. So what I would like to do is give you my personal phone number. So if something is to happen, I will gladly come pick you up and take you to the youth center.
Well, I have, another question I have, quickly. What is the responsibility towards a tenant that the housing authority has other than normal work landlord tenant? Because it is senior and disabled at Heckman. Or is there an additional responsibility at all?
I, I do believe that is through the board of housing. Unfortunately, it's not regulated by the town. It is regulated by the housing authority. I, yeah, by the state, I would, I would defer, I would hold it, Councilwoman, if you could speak to your contact over at the housing authority at this union. Thank you. And, and we will try and get an answer for you as soon as possible. And I won't forget...
I'm just curious, because if there is no additional responsibility, we're just here playing this role.
No, that's not true.
Yeah, well, it is.
Well, I'd like to hear, I would like to hear what you had to say.
He has to cover for the elder people, somebody has to back them and I don't care.
I agree wholeheartedly, Mayor.
But we, I mean, to see them throw all their food away. I mean, I just done a two hundred dollar hoarder that went down the dumpster, out of my freezer and stuff. Ain't nobody else in power but I am for doing it, but that's what happened. And most, everybody near had to throw all their food away and that's the truth.
For someone on a fixed income, you know, last two to the month is very tough. You're spending all your money on food to replenish the stock that you have.
I certainly...
It's a very hard one.
I agree, and I can sympathize. If it's okay, before, I will, I would like to give you my number if you need us.
Yes.
Okay.
And the only one that helped us, and I'm gonna be honest about it, is Tim Berger. That man was here, and this is no lie. I betcha eight times in that one night checking on everyone. And he, I guess he's just worked here and whatever, he has a boss or whatever. But that's the only person we've seen from housing that came and checked on the people. Like I said, we got cancer people, we got people that are blind in our building and stuff. Hello, during the dark? Sure they can't see, but I mean, come on. Something's gotta be done here.
Well, thank you very much for your comments and here, I'd like to give you my card with my personal cell number on it. Should something happen to you during the snowstorm, please call me.
I will.
Even if it's two o'clock in the morning, I, I understand, it's okay. I'm a married man with four children, I'm up all night.
That's all right, that's good.
You're very welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
To the council. Say my thing.
Sorry, anyone else? Mr. Klein, state your name and address for the record, please.
I have a new council, Jim Klein, three eighteen Ohio Avenue. Here to talk this evening or to express my concerns about the safety and security at the temporary, new temporary municipal building. Been brought to my attention that the upper floor has been secured as of today with key fobs.
With what?
With, with key fobs, it's an electronic door that opens up for second floor. So the first floor, of course, and I understand this is a public building and there's public business that needs to be conducted, obviously. That's not my concern, the day-to-day public operations. My concern is the ever-growing concerns about unwanted visitors or un, you know, un...
Right.
Visitors. So, this is brought to the administrators, I guess the mayor's, he's not here. This was brought up to them by a employee on January fourth. And at that time, it was suggested very simply, if you secure the bottom floor properly, takes care of the whole building? Whatever happened, I'll leave it at that. The second floor is now secured by a key fob that only can be operated by people who own these key fobs. Employees. The second floor is manned by a crossing guards, I guess the crossing guards have been asked to sit there. And no, no disparaging crossing guards by no means, by no means. Because I believe you're just as big of a risk as employees on the first floor. They're sat there. No, they're, they're sitting there, trying to, you know, receive visitors and, like I said, typically just public visitors. But if there is an unwelcome guest there, they don't have the formal or any training to go ahead and stop there. There's been more, on more than one occasion, it's been told to me that there has been visitors that come to the municipal building and make themselves in home, in offices, unoccupied offices. Only to be, you know, once that employee returns, surprised, they're sitting there. I, I have a concern with that, it's growing every day, especially in life, everything that's happened. In schools, you know, Dr. Biggs. It's something that needs to be addressed and I'm, by no means am I a security expert, by no means. So... Again, my opinion is, very simply put, if they would have addressed the situation on the first floor properly, it would have taken care of the whole building. I don't know the response time, once an alert is made for the town, you know, to the, to the authorities, respond to that. I know that's probably not public information, obviously, and that's fine. But there's a concern. You know, the way the building is set up, I'm sure you've all been there, we all have children to go to school there, it's very compartmentalized. Classroom, classroom, classroom versus the, the original building where it was open, everybody could see each other. Police department is there, obviously. It was a more secure environment than it is currently right now. And again, we're putting crossing guards in the way, you know, potential harms way, and everybody on that first floor. So the risk factor to me is increase first floor employees and those crossing guards. And a less of a risk, although it could be, the way they did it, something else. A less of a risk to the second floor. I, quite honestly, my opinion is, is that this is kind of elitist and quite frankly, cowardly. That's my opinion.
Vicki? I'm sorry, Mr. Klein?
Sure.
Just out of curiosity, how many employees do we have on the second floor of the municipal building? How many do we have on the first floor?
Nine plus inspections, I'm gonna do seven maybe or so, maybe fifteen or so.
Okay, so it sounds like we have more on the first than we do on the second. I just wanted to just to get clarification. Councilman McVeigh, I would refer to you because of your expertise in this area.
Thank you very much. Mr. Klein, you said you were not an expert in this, but I commend you on your accuracy on how you laid out that building and what you've seen. I, I don't really care if I get in trouble or not because I was told, I don't even know how to address this because I'm scolded whether I walk in the building, I'm scolded if I email about the personnel. I think, I think the building is horribly secure and I, it's a risk. And everybody in the world knows that security is done by levels. There's levels of constructed for security, levels of security. The first thing should be a sign outside that there is a whatever inside. Less than twenty-four hours ago, and I can't control City Hall, I would like to make a suggestion, but I don't, I don't know if the answer, the emails are going to be opened by open time, whether the email's going to be answered or not answered or how, or ignored. Less than twenty-four hours ago, I know what I did for our council and you folks. I emailed Chief Stettner and asked for the magnetometer, which is collecting dust over on it somewhere. And asked for the magnetometer to be put out there and then just to secure those doors. The officer would run the magnetometer. This way, everybody in this building knows for our meeting, we're safe, at least here. That building is, is a huge risk. I've walked in there plenty of times and I voiced my opinion plenty of times. What I'm walking in there with, because I'm certif, I'm certified HR two eighteen in the state of New Jersey, go through the United States. And no one's checking me. And it, no, it's not, it's, it's not the security guard's responsibility. No, it's, it's not anyone else's responsibility. It's, and I don't know, the fob should have been a, a last resort. That's your actual last layer of security if you're going to get all the way up to the top, to the mayor's office. I, I, I'm gonna forward an email tomorrow, we'll see where this goes, to be forwarded to the mayor's office suggesting to use that magnetometer at that entrance. I know they budgeted for another special officer to police department. You should have a special officer or an HR two eighteen person there, somebody of, of, of authority to properly magnetometer these folks going into there. And that's, that's obviously a huge level right then and there, but to have some type of security force. I went to Alpha on a snow day one day, it was snowing. I walked into Alpha, there was a magnetometer looking at me. I went that, I went to little Paccon. There's a magnetometer looking at me. I, 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 I'm charged with twenty-six magnetometers at the presidential center on work every single day. These are, these are not very complicated things and they, and we can put somebody to work and, and someone's gonna properly protect the twenty or so people that are in that building every single day. It's my opinion, I think it's a disaster and thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you.
Councilman, in your opinion, the way the E school was set up when we had our children there, they used the buzz to get in. I imagine that system is still active. Is there any reasons why we couldn't just activate that? I mean, I'm, I'm a little concerned that we have a crossing guard. No disrespect to the crossing guard, but how are they gonna overpower someone like yourself if you walk in that building armed? Or how are they, it, it, you know?
It's, 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 it's really, really simple. One, you post that building secure with signage. Two, you leave the buzzer system, the buzzer system up to get in. Three, you have the human element of a security person there. Four, you have the magnetometer.
Yes.
Now, the key fob up in the upper levels, that's your fifth layer, not your first.
Excellent, okay, I think that email, you're probably, I'd like to see the rest of the staff safe. Thank you, Mr. Klein, for your comment.
Thanks.
Sorry, anyone else? Ms. Paulus, state your name and address for the record?
Melissa Paulus, twenty-six A Glen Avenue. It's unfortunate that the mayor left because I have been trying to contact him for several months. I've been, again, asking for meetings. I have not gotten a response. Therefore, I am asking you at your budget meeting to consider lowering his salary because he's not performing his duties. I am not the only one that has had complaints, as you've heard from several people, that he says one thing to your face and turns around and does either nothing or the exact opposite. He needs to be held accountable to do his job. We are paying for his salary and his benefits. And if he cannot answer to us residents, then he needs to resign. So I think the first step to address the issue, lower his salary. You've done it to other employees that were questionable. I commend you for that. You've done exactly what we voted you to do. And for the record, for anybody who thinks that there's any conspiracy between me and any of these council members, you are wrong. Because I have never been versed or told what to ask or posted on Facebook. I don't need any coaching, I have a mind of my own. If anybody here can say that you have done exactly what I've been accused of or what you've been accused of in versing me or coaching me, please speak up now. Because I'm not aware of it.
I'll be honest, Ms. Paulus, I don't think you have the personality to where I could coach you to do anything.
I, I don't, I don't need anyone to. I actually started coming to these meetings for another reason. And once I saw what's been going on, what I came here for is not important. It's really very upsetting to see what has happened with the current mayor's office. And I commend you for everything you're doing and I stand behind you. Actually, I stand beside you. And keep at it, because you're doing exactly what you were elected for. And like I said, if he cannot start addressing us residents that are paying for him to do a job, then he needs to resign. And if he does not resign and start doing his job, I will reinstate that recall. I've already started getting people who said they will definitely resign. I have conferred with other mayors, I have conferred with other public officials, and they all said, your alternative is to recall him. So anybody who is not satisfied with the job that he's doing or lack of the job that he's doing, contact him. Because I'm ready to move forward. I'm tired of it, too much time has been wasted, and there's a lot of nonsense and what I see as being a waste of legal fees because of his, whatever his issue is. I don't know what his issue is, I really don't. I don't understand it, nobody else can understand it. I have been in contact with the insurance company over the last several months, or probably at least six months. He's a liability to us, and it doesn't take a whole lot to see that. And anybody who doesn't admit to it, then you know what? You're living in a different world, and I suggest you take the rose-colored glasses off. I'm really, I'm tired of it. So again, something's got to be done, I don't know what it is. I have asked for a meeting with him, Mr. Wenner, myself, in my interim, I've gotten no response. What is it? He comes to a meeting and leaves? What's up with that? I know, you have no answer.
It's not that I don't want to answer, it's just that I don't have the answer.
It's disgusting, I'm tired of it.
I'm sorry, but thank you for your comments. So anyone else who was coming? Okay, there being none, we do have council open time, Councilman Lutz? Councilman Lutz is tired. Council vice president Dejra Lutz?
Yeah, I have a few things. We're having the first meeting for Not in Our Town at Phillipsburg Library. It will be held April 16th at 6:00 PM. I will be putting something out via the press tomorrow, possibly Thursday, regarding that meeting, inviting the public. So I want to thank the library staff for accommodating and hosting.
Did you invite the school board?
I did. Today, I sent it to the school board and everybody that was on the original press. I do have a report from the UEZ, so I will read that. There's been no birth youth center report and no planning zone work, so it was canceled. So committee report from the UEZ. So everyone's aware, the Union Square lighting project, phase one, is in progress and awaiting quotes. This is a project to accentuate the architecture of the buildings in Union Square and the main street area. Patrick Ada is the UEZ coordinator. He has recommended an open house be held, which is a one-day event that will coincide with targeted marketing pieces going out to potential investors to bring business to the downtown UEZ area. There may be more than one date, depending on the response from the investors. And the goal is to participate in the project to fill the vacant storefronts, and they've already reached out to all the building owners. He sought help from the Chamber of Commerce to organize it. Suggested dates will be sometime after Easter. The area, just for the public's information, will be, phase one is 68 South Main Street to about 166, also known as the Blood Bridge to the Union Square area. Angela Knowles has prepared a design guideline for Union Square that'll be coming before the planning board at the next meeting on March 22nd. There's also a new business presentation that was made to the UEZ. It's called LEASE Services. It's going to be at 401 South Main Street. They've already purchased the building. They're an autistic rehabilitation center for adults. Construction and renovation will begin soon, they hope to be open at the end of summer. They've purchased the entire property. LESE stands for Learning and Enrichment Experiences. It will be a private LLC dedicated to serving the needs of persons with intellectual and developmental disabilities, also known as ADD and their families. They'll focus on providing learning enrichment experiences for adults over 21 that age out of the system, other programs such as the ARC, that enhance the quality of life outcomes for people with ADD and their families. They plan to employ two full-time, six part-time positions, and they're looking to partner with the local colleges. That's all we had from the UEZ. It was a very nice presentation. The woman has spent a lot of time on this, she has a personal interest in the organization. So I'm sure everyone will be excited to bring that service to town. Next, I have another event here, if anyone is interested, and the Corks and Forks event. It will be held April 30th at Flynn's. So that information is here, if anybody is interested. Does anyone know if our town system is down? Because I called town hall and got voicemail and was told they're moving. And that I should email.
I'm sorry to laugh, I said you.
That's okay, I called three times, and I got voicemail to email. I don't think, I think we're all moved at this point, are we not?
I believe so. I call Vicki and I get ahold of Vicki. I don't call anywhere else, because I would give her three calls.
I call the mayor's office.
Email.
Well, when I call, I want to be answered. Is there a better way? Can I get the mayor's cell phone number to make that easy?
I can give it to you.
Okay, well, that'll happen. If you can get that to me, council president, I'd appreciate that.
I'll give it to you right now, Council vice president.
I don't need to do it, I'm up.
Well, I'm not going to give his number over the microphone.
Last thing I had, in our town code, we have, this is coming from reading through the budget. There were some recommendations made that we should revisit some fees that we have currently. Fees established for park rentals, home rates, dog park, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I have four items specifically. I was curious if there's anybody that would like to work on that with me, so that we can talk about it at the next work session. Specifically, Mr. Lutz, would you like to work with me on that? Fantastic, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman McVeigh?
Thank you all for coming. I always thank you. And you've sat through the parking ordinance, it's amazing. And you're still here. Thank you very much for coming. I did have the magnetometer bring up, but that came out through Mr. Klein's accurate depiction of the security at the city hall. So I will, council president, as I always do, forward emails to you, to forward to our mayor. On, on, on that note, I have sent five, six, I think it's six emails to you regarding a myriad of subject matters, such as the risk management coordinator being local, the inclusion of our special needs children, our recreation programs, our table organization, or the way some folks are listed sometimes, I've got nothing. So I will continue to keep sending you emails, you will continue to forward them. I'm not sure why, and I really wish he was here. I would like to ask him to his face why I'm not being answered. I have a full-time job, I'm a dad, like everybody else, and, and my frustration is beyond words. You know what? Well, if it's still $65,000 and a car and a key, I'll get a petition next year, Vicki, and I'll just go with that, and I'll do that job. That seems a lot easier than what I'm doing for three grand right here. But with that being said, I'd rather, if I can get him to answer my emails, I would say, you know what? Answer your emails first, especially what I heard from tonight. Answer yours first, and then you can get back to me, unless it involves the safety of the folks of the town and stuff like that. I don't really know what to tell you. And lastly, I landed on a good note. I want to thank WFMZ for always coming here. We have, when we first got on, we passed up the resolution of our two, our two medias and how we handle things and, yeah, I don't know what other media it is anyway. I want to thank you for always, and even through, when I was sat out there, you were always here. You do a fantastic job, and thanks, and your passion, but thank you. Thank you very much for always coming out.
Councilman. Just to answer your question, I believe the Leha Valley Live, they only report on Facebook posts. I don't ever see them here, so, and I'm not scared to say it, so, so thank you for being here. Councilman?
Yeah, the only thing I have is that we're about to get started with the new season of the Phillipsburg Youth Track Team. We did our signups this past weekend, we're going to have another signup on 17th at the Berthew Center at noon. If you have any young ones who are interested or know anyone who does have young ones that are interested, please stop by, we'd love to have you guys. So, that's it.
Councilman, just a quick question, that track team, is it traveling?
We traveled to a few meets, so the furthest we'll go is 100 and Central, or in that area, so.
Not too far. All right, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, echoing Councilman McVeigh, I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. We are pretty strenuous times, it appears, huh? I can tell you that although we appear to be divided at times, we're not. Okay, I speak with Councilman Lutz a lot, I do speak with Councilman Davis, he calls me back. I must echo the sentiment of our residents and our council. When I sat in that audience seven or eight months ago and I listened to Council President Trisigny state, I don't know. I'm in the dark. I laughed. But I got to tell you, if it's anything like now, see, we're not in the dark, we're on isolation island, okay? Because I can't get an answer. I do email him, and the only email that was ever reported was me asking him not to sit at the DAS. But what they didn't report was two days later, when I had asked him to please come back to the DAS, because I was wrong. A man enough to admit when I was wrong. And I was. He's the mayor, right, wrong, or indifferent, we don't have to like him, but he is the mayor. So he should take his seat right back up here and answer the questions. I have a problem when I see emails written to myself and Councilman McVeigh banning us from the municipal building. I have a problem when he's telling staff members that they are not allowed to speak with active council members. I have an email here, the night of the open house, which I happily attended, where an email went out globally that said there is to be no business discussions with any elected officials. Why did I run? Why am I doing what I'm doing? You think, I'm doing it because I love it, but I'm not doing it. What am I getting done right now if I can't help you or speak to you? Nothing. You don't have to listen to what the mayor says, and I don't have to listen to what the mayor says. You can speak to me anytime you want, that is your God-given right. I'm a resident of this town. If I choose to walk into that municipal building and speak to an employee, I'm going to do it. He can't tell me no. Now, I will not direct a staff member nor tell them what to do. I will not ask them to do anything other than their job duties, but if I have a question or inquiry, I will ask it. That is my job, and if I don't do that, that is a severe disservice to you. It's a severe disservice to you when he goes out and requests his staff not speak with me. They're scared. That is a hostile work environment. That is horrible. Now, he left here tonight, and he could have sat here and he could have spoken to me. And Lord knows, I've called him and I have emailed him, and if anyone would like to see the emails, you're more than welcome to. I'm not going to pretend to be an angel and say that I've always been nice to the man. I'm not. But I can guarantee you that what he said in return, or his lack thereof, is way worse. Now, I want to move forward. Council Wenner and I had a very nice discussion this evening. Now, I am so tired of the negativity and coming here, this is not what I ran for. And I didn't run to focus on my reelection, I ran for results. So that is what we need to start focusing on. So I'm, I'm very, very hopeful. Now, I know there are some strenuous times ahead for, well, at least three council members. But we'll rise above, and we're going to continue to press forward, we're going to ignore the noise, and as a collective, with five of us, and I mean five of us, we're going to get something done. Because I'm only here for four years, I don't play it on the fifth. So thank you, and I appreciate you coming out. On that note. I would like to do a motion for the Raffle. Through for Raffle license number RL 1255 issued to St. Phillips, St. James for carnival games on May 2nd, 2018 through May 4th, 2018, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. And also, May 5th, 2018, noon until 11:00 PM, and May 6th, 2018, from noon until 5:00 PM.
So moves.
Roll call, but Vicki?
Councilman Lutz?
Yes.
Councilman McVeigh?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Council vice president Dejra Lutz?
Yes.
Vice president?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, stay safe.